Twenty fifteen sixteen. On to six. Anyone want to speak to the Public Carrier and Transfer Funds from Transportation to O N M? Seven, Public Carrier Resolution on Drivers Education. Nine, Public Carrier on the way for this whole code. And nine, Public Carrier Administrative Funds. And we have a item ten, Truck. Any questions on the board? We will move on. I don't know what's going on. Yeah, several items. Anybody has anything about state budget? But there's more development today. Sounds like maybe they're making some progress down in Springfield. John had proposed a budget that would fully fund education for the first time since two thousand nine. People pushing that. It sounds like both parties are focused on the education budget, hopefully not the whole budget, but they can get that through. So that schools can open up time. There was news out today that they think they're close to having that done. Biggest question right now about this is how much money should probably be given to help them bail out with some of their funding issues. So it's kind of a distinct point as down in state. So they went back to the session tomorrow, trying to have something in place for July one. So let's hope some of that gets played out through the Bay Area Education where we're going to reach campus. It'd be nice if we were funded fully, but wait until I see what they've got done. Be nice to have some of that. We were audited by the ISBD. I'm going to tell you, I said, any of your legislation, I want your package sent out. I'm going to be sent to you in copy in our audit. Many little things in there about building stuff around and kind of doing things in different places. The big thing I think that came from the audit, this was from FY twenty thirteen year, was that we had understated our expenses in transportation. And in that audit, we were going to get some of that back, about eighty-six thousand more back for transportation for that. So that's good news coming in there. I think we've had a lot of audit and everything. Speaking of audits, we got word from the R O E that our technical system plan is compared to our four. The project is compared to our four. In February, came back and we're looking at that. And we passed over there at the A T R S L coming up soon. Thank you to the Velvet Chamber of Congress. They gave us a lot of dollars to pop off that because textbook store kids taking on start. Which is a very nice donation that they should be back. Facilities updates, cleaning, and all of our buildings I was out touring those house. We've been moving on as scheduled. The groups are moving as planned to upper elementaries. The little part that the law hasn't done completely as of today. Middle schools continue to progress, as you know, with many little sections that they were working on there. Gashings Dollar is on break today. He's still working on designs and cause for the major area of the district of Manchester. And Jim is looking to see if some of our smaller, good shaped, black top areas around the campus schools can come and see. Back in session. And those are the areas that are good when they prepare to start preparing to play. And the last bit of news we have on facilities there is we think we had a lightning strike on the bottom floor. Where it took down the elevator control panel, as well as the simplex bio alarm system. So they're kind of working with insurance to get that done, straightened out and locked back up. One thing, Don West, Don West came and worked with Julia and I from Harlem School District. He's the Transportation Director. Julia and I had a chance to have him review our handbook, sit down and go over our handbook. And we had a chance to ask a lot of questions, make sure that we had a good grip of our handbook processes, policies, practices, and everything else. And Don took probably, what, Julie, three hours, almost two and a half. We said, no, we talked a lot of things about transportation and helped us break some of that up. The next thing that we want to do is update our transportation handbook, which has been about maybe ten or twelve years since the last update on that. We'll put a committee together of our drivers and Patty and Scott. And work on updating our handbook and talk about different things, make sure they're all in the same page. And then talk to the drivers at the beginning of the year about updating. And that is all I have. Do I have any questions or comments on the board? All right, we have the committee reports, Policy Committee.
Nothing to report. Didn't have a meeting. Possibly have one next month.
Thank you. Business Services Committee.
We have events since the last board meeting.
Anything scheduled? Thank you. We have the snow bees forming a plan.
We have a man, and we'll meet near the end of the summer. For one of the projects that we're meeting, we can talk about.
Also got Jim working on the eight to ten year plan is the question for it. We'll hopefully have something to bring out before that's all that you have to answer. Thank you. Jake, anything?
We have not yet. And thanks to everyone.
Jake's got a little bit of update on some of our stuff that we wanted. Okay. Okay, I was thinking of putting some recommendations. Okay, they're move on to consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McNeever?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Motion to approve the handbooks.
I don't think I got your vote. I'm not sure. Sorry. Oh, yes, but. All right, we'll add unfinished business. Approval of health insurance agreements. Recommend that we approve our renewal rate from Gallagher at six point four percent. We got a lot of discussion lately about the renewal rates and possibility of going into COA. But when we received back our initial quote for entering the COA, increased sort of about twenty percent. And about another hundred and forty thousand more to look that way. So I believe my parent called up and he said, he said, you know, we want to look at this. Talked with him a little bit. So we're recommending that we go with our renewal rate for Gallagher at six point four percent. Any discussion on that? Is there a motion?
I think a motion that we have.
Second. Motion second. Roll call.
Mrs. Maxey? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
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 Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I'm being approved of the student handbook, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Yeah, at our last meeting, we recommended that we should have Scott Hemmending look at it, especially with the new law surrounding Senate Bill one hundred. Scott did have a chance to look at it. And in your packet, I put the changes that he made. For the most part, our handbook was in good shape. There were several phrases that he put or added to us to kind of give us more of an encompassing coverage. But his comment to me was, he said, I reviewed our district code and made some minor language additions to make sure we made Senate Bill one hundred and the base name behind it. He felt their handbook does that, puts each situation on a case by its basis with the facts, estimative, and extended circumstances. And he said that our rules provided fair treatment to all students, which are consistent with the laws, policies, and district practices. So he felt our handbook was in pretty good shape. My recommendation would be to approve the handbook as presented.
Are there any exceptions for the handbook, the athletic handbook or? I don't think. As far as one of those.
I don't know if that, if that didn't jump off my page. That didn't, you know. Not that we saw or came back. I think when we talked it last time after our last meeting was, is there might be some times where punishments are different. But athletics brings that as a privilege more than, more than that dash to school.
I make a motion to approve the student handbook as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey? Yes.
Well, I have seen, but as presented in May, we said that there was a lot of line items that had adjustments to it. My thing's been in Jersey and Rhode Island, saying they just kind of would have made it more true what our budget would be. So I recommend that the board approve the independent budget as presented.
I make a motion to approve the.
Motion. Second. Second, concerning, for the discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
I have been approved of the resolution of transfer funds from transportation going on. Yep, we talked again in May that our O N M fund has been a little low. So our recommendation is to transfer five hundred thousand for transportation over to the O N M fund for this budget. Any special? We have a question presenting that's currently.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrick?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Motion to approve the handbooks.
Item A, approved of the administrative cost payment. Yes, we were contacted by the ISBD. We adjusted a specific item salary from the instructional line over to administrative salaries. Make sure we place nineteen was placed the wrong spot in our budget. And when we did that, we changed that over, brought our administrative costs about five percent. Didn't really change our costs or lower our costs, but because the line item wanted to go over, but apparently it didn't. So now that we adjusted the line item, we're just giving away for a mistake. And so if the board approved that, we can set point for a downstate, stating that we have just moved in this line. Did I explain that clear enough? I know it's a lot of protocol. That's a great routine. I don't know if it's routine as much as.
It's a normal, this activity that they see in the past. They hire people and it increases that. But we did, we had already had her, like, they were paying her on her special education. And she's administrator, so I, I came here, I look to do an industry where it's supposed to be, and that's what's up that long.
So what does it cost?
Motion to approve the administrative cost paper.
Second. Motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McNeever?
Yes.
All right, I have the high school recommendations for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Yeah, back in April, at our curriculum committee, we had a discussion. There was a situation where one of our students was taking a course at another high school that is not recognized. When you create, typically treated the same discipline they're taking that. But this course that the student was taking was a college course that could be taken for college course credit. And so there was kind of an appeal to say, why would that count as a weighted grade as well? And so from that, and then when we calculate rank and valedictorian and all that stuff, there was a couple of questions. So from that meeting, we wanted to look into a few things and review them. And I asked Jake to work with the counseling department and some staff with him to review some of those practices that came up. And so, which he did, he had a chance to meet with them, and he's here to provide to you a little bit of a summary about their discussions, what they talked about. And make a few recommendations as to hopefully a way we can do things, hopefully a little more fair. So Mary, anything you'd add? Did I sound that?
No, that's, yeah.
So there was a few just questioning about how we do things and is there, is there, after discussion, is there a better way? At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hume.
So there were, there are a number of things that came up, committee. And after we did some research on, on how some of the school theory, the next request was, you know, could we take a survey of the staff and put it together? So we did that. And off the numbers that came back from survey, I mean, we had a committee of seven who originally invited two and ended up not being able to make it. So there were two teachers, a guidance counselor, a secretary, myself, who ended up being to discuss the survey results and how we could address some of the things that came up from that. For the most part, there are several things that the staff really felt shouldn't stay the same. And the committee was in agreement with that. The couple of things that came out of recommendations, you know, was a question of what, why are we using seventh semester GPA to calculate valid points of valedictorian? Why not push it all the way through? I will say that a majority of the schools in there, you actually do go off of, off of seventh semester GPA. However, there were, you know, there were some weekly in semester, and you can only make it more competitive all the way throughout. And then push our students to continue to sell. The committee really felt that the only way to really do that is to possibly continue to get out when they do get out, but push graduation back one week. What that would allow, because it's a real quick turnaround for counseling offices to try to get some of those outside credits for students to go to run and start, for students to take classes, or C N C, or technical education cooperative. And so, you know, it gives them a couple more days to be able to get all of those credits in. If it's not, and it would give us not opportunity buffer to calculate, you know, the GPA of all our students then. And, you know, hold academic certainly for the seniors on, you know, Wednesday after then they're out. And then for graduation, we can, you know, tradition. And yes, there would be anything between, but it just allows for that buffer for us to work with the number of things, to be able to use eighth semester GPA. Without having that, you know, that buffer. It really makes it difficult to get in and everything that's leading to calculating usually being seventh semester GPA. So a recommendation, just to keep seniors getting out when they do push graduation back one week to allow time to get all that information in. And then you can make the eighth semester GPA valid points. The second recommendation that came out of that is.
Just warning, do colleges consider seven or eighth semesters for most of theirs and stuff?
They'll ask, they'll ask for valedictorian student tourney. A lot of students have already been accepted by the time they graduate from school. So some colleges will use their end results and depend upon, you know, their rank in class, which should give them as far as valid points of valedictorian, to give them certain financial aid. And so in doing so, yeah, pushing it to the end, you would then, you know, make it competitive to the end. Otherwise, it's just a report, report off the seventh semester GPA. But most students already made seven for colleges, and they get along with the minor ones, less competitive on that. You know, but they may want to think about it.
So are all number ones to be treated as valedictorian by those schools?
Correct, correct. And that would be reported to them, you know, that they were valedictorian student tourney. Any other questions about number one? I do want to say the one drawback to that is, and it's just a matter of, you know, it is a matter of area recognition things. W R E X is asking for that by the end of the, or the beginning of, or the end of, or beginning of May. So we wouldn't have that until, you know, maybe twentieth or so, you know, somewhere around that date in time. By that point, they have already had invitations out, not a hundred percent certified. I think they're waiting for that for shortly, you know, around, you know, around that time.
So is that the video thing on TV?
Correct, we may not have.
What are the criteria that they use? Is that valedictorian?
The top, the top person in the class. So, you know, admittedly, people have to realize that, hey, if we're using eighth semester GPA, we might not have representative, you know, at the W R E X, but, but, you know, that's area recognition versus, you know, who's really achieved. Maybe for scholarships, you know, in college. So, you know, something to think about though, wanting to give you a good handle on that and stuff.
What do you think, most of the other schools, they still have some recognition, like you said, you have.
Yeah, we could. One person in the classes at that time, sitting at first law. It could quite possibly change, you know, in weeks' time. So, you know, yes, there's good and bad. I mean, those are things that we want, want to think about if we're going to do that. So certainly, you know, I don't have a problem with doing that. We just need all to be on the same page as far as what can determine. You will go ahead and take who's number one at the time. And if we decide that it's eighth semester GPA, we'll go ahead and send who's number one at the time, realizing that we're not capable of figuring this out.
So can you talk to us a little bit about the process for how you guys calculated GPA? You were here earlier in the year, talking about the issue of your revenue, power school software, do people need it? We have that process taken care of, and that's helping, and that's great for us.
Power school is not calculating.
It can, power school can. We talked about power school, power school, we went to an outside vendor to have that look that specializes in handling some of those issues and stuff for power school. The idea that they said they couldn't do it, they're running the money, they're going to have some other friends, or they can't get that to work for power school.
So here's the problem, the calculation in itself is not that complex. What the program can't do is if I have two weighted courses and four non-weighted courses, they can't pull the number two and four out of there. They can't pull the points that they earn from, from the weighted, like they've earned from non-weighted several years. It just wants to lump them all together, and there's no way for it to separate that. It hasn't now. And so what we, what we have to do is, what we have to do is, what the other school had, other schools have done previously as well. You know, use, use the same system is you have to put it into the numbers, into an Excel spreadsheet. You have to download numbers, you know, specific numbers from power school.
So we're going to calculate it by essentially whatever secretary is sitting in there doing this.
And essentially, I'm, I'm, I took seven hours on. The one thing that they do have to, the one thing they do have to do is they input a rank. So yes, there is a secretary who did have to input a rank at that moment.
And then that can change every time a new grade is sent in. Nice on you too.
And we have a way to address that as well. You know, for current students, we've got a way to address that for current students by making a, by creating a mail merge letter. And instead of putting class rank onto, you can transfer this amount for current students. They would still get the transcript, but we would take the class rank off, and then you just be able to number just your class rank. The easy thing that that would do is, so like a student transfer present, I just simply put that student, you know, into where, I can put them at the bottom of the list. I can then, you know, have the Excel spreadsheet or Google Docs, rank it by where it falls numerically as far as the GPA goes. And then assign, you know, where they are, you know, the list to, you know, a number in the list. That's a much quicker reference. And mentally, it does take more time, yes.
But to go back to what you're saying, is there, I wish there was an easier way. It would be nice if our software, if we could keep that felt, that give a chance for error.
The question again goes to a person who takes two weighted courses and five non-weighted courses. Can produce potential four point two nine GPA, so two in five we're talking about. A person who ends up earning two weighted courses and four non-weighted courses can earn a four point three three at most for traditional GPA. A person who takes four classes, lower class load is, is working on actual class. Which is why we need to switch on these. I can tell you, I mean, that, and that's a discussion as far as GPA, you know, as far as GPA goes, that's, that's. That I would back, but I do, I do still feel, I don't mind putting seven hours in. No, that is what's fair.
You're slamming it towards the kids who can take.
Who are going to take? So.
Or I'm slamming it, but rewarding the right. The other thing that I've got is Randy Porter is going to, after our summer work here, sit down and look, see if there's anything we can do in the Excel spreadsheet to try to make some of these things here streamlined. But I don't have answers on how to make it very easy or more efficient. But we'll stay. And that's also the thing that was built in Word, we got more cuts, weighted classes than we offered this whole, making sure that they're, they're fair chance. Correct, correct.
So is that the sole purpose for this, is to try to discourage kids who go outside and take weighted classes?
No, basically, they say we had a bunch of running circuits through roads, and they waited for weighted classes. Oh, oh, what's wrong with that?
Here, let me tell you, I guess here's, here's the example I'll give you. First class that went through, the first class that went through had a young man who after two years was number one. The first class that went through with running start had a young man who was number one. That young man chose to stay in North Boone, wishing to stay in the high school experience rather than go on, you know, to take some of those college courses. So we had several students, we had six, I believe, six students from that first class who had been two years from the running start. He could not, even though he, he earned, you know, all aids, he couldn't compete with the students taking college courses. We don't want to penalize the students who are taking college courses either. I mean, I think that's true for families taking greater of college courses as well. The idea behind limiting those who are taking college courses to the maximum number that we could allow. The purpose behind that is to make an even point, not discourage them, but to make an even point. So in other words, they would be able to earn at most the same GPA as the students who live here. Now here's, here's the other thing that I will end up telling you is, this year we had, at most, look it up. A student did at most five weighted courses in the senior schedule. We had no seniors who actually took five weighted courses, they took four. We still offer those five weighted courses to the students who are taking more than start, because that's what the possibility was of taking, you know, taking. So, you know, they still were able to, you know, they were still able to take the five weighted courses. Um, it just so happens, valid points according to this year, it mattered because they were, they were falling up ahead and they're taking the weighted courses.
If I didn't know better, I would say that this whole system is correct to try and keep kids, have smarter kids that are, continue, keep them from going up the challenge themselves at college level.
Okay, well, you're more than welcome to your opinion on things, but as I just stated, the purpose is not to discourage kids from going out, it's to try to create a level playing field, so that both the students who go out and the students who stay here have it equalized. So you're.
But they, but they can allow, if they give those kids to create associates to agree when they graduate from college, so their work is much more rigorous than what they stated as a choice that student made. It seems like the, the attempt to make it even for the kids who choose to stay versus go to college is really don't make down the system.
I don't know how it's letting down the system, they still, graduate associates, they still can't earn valid points according to twenty and the public rates. So I, I guess I.
Essentially, if they went out to Rock Valley, so gave science class, they get half credit. Whereas if they stayed in North Boone and take the science class, a freshman in the science class, they get a credit. So essentially, those kids would have to go into college level, science classes, they're weighted one credit and or one credit.
Incorrect, that is incorrect. So, you get a half credit for first semester credits, you get a half of the credit for second semester credits. The way the, uh, the way we currently give credits, um, in that discussion was, was part of this committee, because it's gonna change something that I didn't believe was part of this necessarily was. However, um, if a student takes a science course, and you're right, if they take a semester-long science course, and it's just three hours long, you are correct in the sense that they could, um, they, they don't have credit because they've taken a semester. In some cases, and I'll, I'll admit this is something that we didn't discuss, a three semester course could equate, in some cases, it does equate to the same material that the students take a year long. I, I, I won't deny that, but in some cases, it equates to the semester that the students take. One of the things that we talked about is the university itself has gone through classes they take to determine how many credit hours a student should be taking, how many credit hours they can take to earn, um, like, you know, from a class. This class is three credit hours. So rather than thus reinventing the will of what the university did and going through to determine the number of credit hours from a class, we said since they've already done that, they were, we'll leave them. You know, and in, in some cases, you're right, in some cases, that's, they take a year long, the senior long material that our kids take, and, and they, they take the college kids taking this, but that is not always the case. So, um, you know, that's something that we felt, you know, maybe the university didn't show we look how, you know, the general, they pay credit hours. You know, as far as that goes.
Now, there's a perfect way to equal off, based on how we do credits and how the university does, but that's always gonna be a challenge for the justice.
Right, and each university, and this is what you find, each, each university may determine that, uh, the biology one oh one has a different number of credit hours, and this university has, and this, this year. Um, you know, that's something where, you know, you're not gonna be able to, you know, pull all the universities across the United States, you have to make it all the same guys, we need to come up with, you know, the same number of credit hours. Um, you know, we'll allow the university to turn a number of credit hours that the class should be.
Any further discussion? Did you wanna talk, you have number two especially?
Sure, sure, yeah, okay, so, number two, um, we have students, and, and I, I brought this up in the curriculum, maybe, um, I brought it up as a matter of fact. And the student, we have students who are taking, um, engineering classes at, 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 um, Hanamiga. Hanamiga does not wait that class. However, the students do have an opportunity to take a test to earn college credit. So they take the class, that test is matched up with that class, and if they choose to take that, that test, and form well enough, they can earn college credit, then, you know, for them.
And in this particular case, it was an engineering course, it was a, it was a ranked course.
So, the committee, the committee looked at that to say, well, kind of states, and, and, this is a very rigorous class, you know, we, we've looked at it, we're not certain why Hanamiga decides that it's not, you know, a weighted course, because it's something where, you know, we would think weighted ourselves. We felt, so, so the committee, after looking at the survey results and discussing it, one of the things we felt as a committee is, if there was a class that a student could take, you know, at another school, and, or we're here, where they, and then there was a test that was paired up with it, where they could earn college credit, whether they took the, the course or not, we would give them weighted credit, or whether, I'm sorry, whether they took the test or not, as long as they took the class, we would give them weighted credit. And so, we, we felt that, um, you know, if, if you're taking a class that's rigorous enough, or there's a test matched up to, to, that you can earn, you know, college credit, we give weighted, weighted credit for your class.
It's still, you're passing.
Correct, well, you'd have a weighted F, if you didn't pass, if you just sat there and did nothing, you'd have a weighted F. So. Any questions on that one?
And our, our past practice was to, um, honor what the school was giving, so if the school was not giving weighted credit, even. And in this, in this case here, we felt like, well, this is like, is a class that we count for college credit, it's a rigorous class. Do we need to relook at how we treat that kid, is that clear?
Wouldn't that always be considered an A P class?
Not necessarily, that, the engineering course is not considered an A P class, although all A P classes would be.
Well, okay. So there, there are high school classes you can take that are A P classes, and you can still get, um, college, college level credit as a freshman?
Yes, sir.
And they're not A P, do we offer any of those?
Negative.
Besides Hanamiga's one, do you have, have you got anybody else locally that's doing that? Do you know?
Not that I'm aware of. It, it, it takes, the class is through Project Make the Way. Um, and, and it, it's a way of bringing engineering into, into a school. It costs, I've looked into it, it costs about sixty thousand dollars to, to start up, and you have to have space for, just for the equipment. Something I'd love to see is bring in and work on at some point in time. You know, and, and people see, you know, this is something we can work on towards the future. But, um, yeah, currently, currently, our students, Hanamiga is the only place that offers it. There are other high schools that have Project Make the Way, and some of those make those Project Make the Way classes courses weighted, but not all.
Do you know if the student took that, um, test at the end?
He tested, he passed the college credit. But, but not all of the students who took the class took the exam.
Well, some of my thoughts aren't worth it, even our own students that take A P classes, or this class at Hanamiga, I'd be more inclined to, you know, give them the weighted credit only if they take the test. I think it's rather foolish to go through the program and not take the test for the, for the cost of the test, and the benefit to, at the college level. I don't understand why we're not incentivizing students to take the test.
At one point in time, we offer, uh, when we didn't have every student who took A P, take the exam, students were still earning honors credit even if they didn't take the exam as far as the A P, just because the, the course content is, you know, some more rigorous, those are some more rigorous courses that we add, or that we, that we have at North Boone. And, um, you know, or, or even I would say probably just a little bit of a step. Step up, or, or very similar to our, our honors courses where they can take an exam for college credit.
Correct, but you understand what I'm saying, to incentivize them to take the test. Do you, do you have a, uh, a logical explanation of why you wouldn't take the test after you went through the program? Why you went through this, some of these.
If the test is eighty dollars, and you can get yourself a credit at the college level, it seems like the same money.
I, yeah, I don't, I'm not gonna lie, I don't have a reason why you won't take it, I even know, uh, the committee, you know, just thought that it's, it's the rigor of the course, we're determining the rigor of the course that you're taking.
Correct, and I'm not saying that they have to pass the test.
Sure.
They can sit there and put X's all the way down the page. I'm just thinking that maybe that's something we should consider to incentivize students to take it, do you? This is a little off the subject, but do, you know, is there some time you can report back on this year's students who took A P classes, how we took the test at the end of the year at North Boone?
Absolutely.
Something in the future, but I just think it'd be something to incentivize them if that's all it is.
Sure.
Just to get the weighted credit, I don't think they does, and they might be surprised at what they do.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I, I can just tell you at this point in time, I mean, I, I'm just reporting what came back from.
Correct.
You know, we, we did have some discussion about.
I'd say it was a little off track, but it's maybe in the future.
Sure.
If, what, if I was gonna say is that if we look to do some of these things, I'm looking for feedback for the board, this would be something that we would have to take back to policy, uh, because we had to put something in policy six colon three, right, that's, that's why the discussion tonight, so it's, these things are pertinent, policies six colon three, I'm just trying to be able to, when we pulled it out last night.
Jay Brayton, now isn't it required, I know there's students who take the A P, who take the test.
Bray needs, okay.
It's required right now, I know it wasn't, yeah, it was under the serum, took some classes, she took the test, but not everybody did.
Correct.
But then, um, I don't remember when, a couple of three years, really changed, and people gave me class, you're then required to take or have to take the test.
Correct, it occurred. Five or six years ago, it was supposed to be four of the key principles.
Yeah, I guess Sarah has been.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're motion to take this to policy.
Well, yeah, I wanted them to hear it, uh, and see if the board was, that's something that the board has, uh, would like us to move forward with, to write the policy. Kind of look at some of these exceptions, when there isn't a weighted grade, if we know it's a college course, and to, um, well, basically, just to look at that in policy, that's something that maybe, uh, policy six colon three, take that back to policy. Equivalences of those courses that.
Maybe we should, we should talk to Hanamiga, and how they're, they're doing in essence, it's not a weighted grade.
And why is it not?
Yeah. They're offering the course, let's get their feedback.
Hanamiga should be okay, still be okay with us moving forward in the policy committee, and get that feedback?
Yeah.
All right.
I, do you guys want me to go over number three real quick, or have we done with number two?
Sure, you, just, you go ahead and summarize three and two.
Okay, number three just states, um, and, and it's in our, um, it's in our curriculum guide, and it says retake policy. And I'm not lying, that's, that has been in there since before my time as well, um, I tried to look through policy, I tried to look through some of the, uh, you know, some exhibits, and I couldn't find a specific policy myself, I'm not gonna lie. Um, but, you know, we state right now that if you, if you fail a class, you may not retake the course. So basically what happens, um, we have kind of worked our way around it, so we have typically, um, like geometry, you have honors geometry, geometry, integrated geometry, um, you know, all three geometry courses. So you could, in essence, take regular geometry, and then if you don't perform well on regular geometry, you could, you know, then maybe take an integrated course, um, for our kids who take integrated, if you didn't take integrated, you can't necessarily move, you know, down, there's possibility maybe that we let you move up, you just struggled with something else. But basically, a lot of the reasons why some of our students aren't performing well is because they're just not good at the time. They're not, you know, doing homework, because they're not doing the homework to practice, you know, in, in some cases, those students then just aren't performing well on, you know, some, some exams. Where the students really are, are right enough, and if, you know, they can do regular geometry or honors geometry, you know, regular geometry, we want them to stick with, with regular geometry, and retake, you know, at the level that they should be, you know, should be able to perform at. And so one of the things that, um, you know, the, the group discussed, because actually this was brought up by, at a staff meeting, and, um, this one was one of those landslide votes, as far as, you know, asking the staff online, we'd like to make sure that, you know, everybody should be able to retake a course, a core course, at least, when I say a core course, I'm talking about, um, math, science, social studies, English. Um, if you think about the social studies, we have world cultures right now for freshmen. If for some reason you didn't perform in world cultures, you know, all of a sudden you can't take them, you've got, you have two and a half years of social studies. So those are one of those things where, um, the staff will raise strongly that we would like to give the kids another opportunity to take the course. Um, you know, allowing them that opportunity, and then after, um, if, if for some reason they didn't perform in it again, then yes, they would have to take, you know, some type of credit recovery, um, you know, through American School or online course, it's a bank credit online course. Um, as far as the electives go, there's enough electives out there, um, I think we kind of felt right. Students have other choices to fill those electives without having to go through, you know, as far as a court, there's only so many court courses containing things. So they really wanted to give the students a, a second opportunity, you know, some of those classes. And so those are three recommendations that came in, um, and out of the survey.
Any further discussion or any questions?
I'll just, uh, link to, uh, to policy.
Just want to correct them.
Yeah.
Are you guys, you have said the policy?
It's fine.
I'm really feeling bad.
Okay.
All right. New business, item A twenty sixteen bill. So, wanna make motion start, sixteen votes?
Make the motion to approve the twenty sixteen bill, June twenty sixteen bills.
Second. Motion second.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr., uh, this is next, yes. Mr. Cole?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ryan here?
Yes. Item B transportation for twenty sixteen, point seven eight.
At our last board meeting, um, asked to put together a plan of what it would cost to run zero hour buses. If we ran three buses, one at Capren, um, one in Poplar Grove, and then one at Candlewick, we, we calculated three bus routes, and somewhat of what we've done in the past, total cost would be about four thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Talking to Jake, Jake estimated that there might be fifteen band students, ten point training students that might have potentially, they would use it every day. So about twenty-five kids overall, um, like I said, if we have those three pickup spots, about half of that would be reimbursed in that state for transportation. We used to have it a while ago on the Azren, we had, we had this one, uh, cuts were in line. But again, we have about twenty-five kids that might use it, I just thought, bring it back to cost, I guess, I think that's something that they're interested in moving forward.
Like, uh, move it for just one year, see, see if we can help grow that program, grow those programs.
Every year, yeah.
At the end of the year, it's, it sunsets, come back and reevaluate whether it was worth it.
Did, um, did you look at scheduling band elsewhere during the day?
We did, um, and we also took a survey with that, um, you know, from, from the parents, from the band parents, we did not send out to, we, the big problem with scheduling during the day, there's a conflict, you know, every hour with, with something, um, with some of the more academic courses, um, when I say more academic, I'm talking about our weighted courses, honors and AP. Um, and parents, uh, they took the survey, majority, the vast majority of parents felt like they were forced to keep to stay during the zero period because of the conflict with, um, with back end classes during the day.
I also received feedback from a couple of parents that wanted to leave band and say, well, we're for that same reason.
And how many people, we, should only hurt more of this?
In, in the survey, um, when the survey came back, I had, um, three who said, yes, they want, I had five who were indifferent on the matter, and I had, okay, I'm telling this number off the top of my head, so I apologize, he was somewhere around twelve to fifteen, that, that said they wanted to keep it, you know, where it is.
Yeah, so.
Thank yous.
If you ask a question, how many people wanted that bus service to happen?
Correct.
How many people didn't use this?
I don't know.
I think this was one, where I believe when you talked the last time, you didn't, you set a question out there so much because if you say, which like transportation, or, um, felt that. You, you have a good guess that you think that would help grow both ones?
Well, I think definitely make it easier for some of those younger students. There are, there are students out there who are not taking, or not taking. I can only think of two people that I spoke with, you know, that I spoke with who are not taking, because, friend, I do know, and speaking with some of the parents, and some, speaking with some of the parents, you know, who currently have students, it would be easier, it would be somewhat easier for them. Um, now, there's the thing, the reason why they didn't ask about transportation is, I didn't know exactly what we're gonna set up. I guess I don't know how much difference it'll be for a parent, you know, you get into a lot of footings, and I don't know how different it is for a parent to drive. Well, I'm gonna have to drive my kid, do not mention, I've done that, I've driven my kid, you know, to high school, you know, six point half dozen the other, but it does cut a couple minutes out. You know, there will be something, of course, for, well, I'm going to walk the street, I don't know, um, you know, there's so many variables in there, but it's hard to determine, you know, exactly how effective, you know, that's gonna be, I think, less than probably two weeks, wait one year, you know, or not wait one year, but once it's served, but let's see how, how much effect, how much we're gonna be getting out of. You know, providing service, how many kids are using?
Well, we have eight kids in the northern half of the district of the B. Essentially, we locked out the, this, do we, do we add it up to the Manchester branch, I don't know. We, we did it based off kind of what you said us the last time, we did, we asked for that Manchester, we were the, like, so, you know, if we wanted to add the Manchester stuff, that's what we did.
Substate, you know, it's a, you know, taking care of the waters, most parents in Manchester, you know, get no kids, which is really difficult, it's made for expanding. Right. Most parents, you know, you can't just, you know, or, you just don't like the decision.
One of the concerns that I would have is, do we have four bus routes that could get to those more stops and back out to their, into the high school and back out on the road, that regular routes are untied to get to the, that would be, I know there's three that can, I'm not sure about our fourth row. We, the last, we only have three buses that are not out on their road before seven twenty, all other bus routes are on the road before seven twenty. And one of the questions is that they would have to be at the high school before seven twenty to be able to get out on their route to get to the other two, to be able to do their drops on time. Now, then, your, my other concern is, so that means they're picking up, to be here by seven twenty, they're picking up at five minutes after seven at the area schools, you know, locations, the winner card, are those kids standing outside, are they going to, parents can be sitting in the car waiting until that bus route arrives? Some of those can be issues, are the schools going to be open, if your kids are walking, will you be getting that before, while the bus, while the bus being waiting for those children? Those, maybe so, we have an announcement to make.
My biggest fear is that it's all be utilized, we have, we're supposed to help three kids. It's an expensive experiment. A thousand, two thousand dollars. We'll see what gains we've had, one person wants us. Every time someone wants something, we might spend a couple thousand dollars. I grew up in ourselves, that's, well, I keep watching.
That's really better, you just want to go right now. Jake has any bench, he has talked to eight three members. Those surveys that were sent out by Mr. Flint, there are forty-three surveys that were handed out. Received, I can't.
Could you, could you, that's faster, time too.
So, band couldn't be substituted somewhere in the schedule during the day, in place of like a senior level class that would have more opportunity to have their own transportation?
It can't fit into the day. There, there's so much conflict, there, there's so much conflict with, um, students being able to take that. Essentially, if you're gonna take, um, you know, weighted course, you're gonna be here long. Those weighted courses then, like, you know, are gonna take, there's typically, you know, two, two to three weighted courses in our area. So you're essentially talking about taking, you know, the possibility that a third of the students may then not be able to take a band because they're involved in, you know, be, because the difficulty of scheduling, you know, couldn't be able to take. You know, the honors courses, we don't have, you know, a ton of AP courses, you know, as far as the volume of AP courses go. AP, uh, US history, we're likely to have one section of AP US history, we're likely to have one section of AP conference, we're likely to have one section, you know, the way it works out right now, we've got AP college in the seventh grade, which really stinks because a lot of those kids are, you know, students who are often involved in extracurriculars, um, and it's something that we sure would like to avoid, but one or eight AP courses has to be during that time, and so no matter what, you're, you're running into, you know, scheduling conflicts, and that's gonna despeak the numbers of the band, or so, by going to, by going to the end.
We've heard in the past, when we discussed this, when we talked about it, uh, if you choose those kids, if you choose them, they'll start to take AP courses, and then they're just like, correct. And most of these kids play sports, that's why they can, they're a lot of them.
That's correct. So, um, the extracurricular activities, it's, it's like what, in actual, I mean. Can we reread the motion as of the, for right now? Motion, also, you made a motion, how's it? Second, then, motion.
Motion, second.
Further discussion? How many times will the bus come back empty before we stop the route?
Sorry, what was the question? How many times will the bus route, like, kill that team before we stop?
All the times, of course, buses come back, kill them, just click, take care of the kids again.
How about, how about when it starts, I bring it to the board's attention?
I also have a question on that, if you, if these roads out at the beginning of the year, employees take them based on that road and how much money that road's gonna be. And if you stop it after so many days, you're gonna have an angry employee because they take roads based on how they are. So if you add twenty minutes, thirty minutes onto a route, and then ten, ten days later, you're gonna take it away, there are gonna be maps that I'm gonna take a shorter route, and I don't look at it. they're going to be mad that I'm going to take a shorter route, and I don't look at it as short as it's going to be. I don't know.
Those are also, you also listed the road, we'll see.
Well, they may not take those roads as long as they have.
But I think you hold that discussion, I think that's the trial. I think we'll send the train on a broker. Any further discussion?
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Allison?
No.
Motion, yes, three, three.
Item C, minutes of trade or engagement between twenty or twenty sixteen.
Yeah, the minutes didn't indicate, although maybe there was, didn't indicate that there was a secretary pro town assigned. She won't get all plates present. So that's me, was it? So it's absent to the minutes.
He was.
So, didn't make it in the minutes. Did, that I could see, but I think that would be signed by whoever, rather than, that name should be listed at the bottom, but I don't know who was assigned. So it's Joe.
Any further with that?
No, I moved to print this, other than the secretary pro town sign, would sign the battle.
Motion's up, any further discussion with that?
What's that?
All in favor? All vote. The last one's I, D, resolution of prevailing wages.
Again, we have the infamous Davis Bay Connect. And this costs, this district hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars across the state alone. On principle alone, boards across the state should vote against this every year. Hey, some of these wages are ridiculous, they're actually.
Point of order, this is required.
They won't be, but I have the floor, sir. And I'm speaking why I'm opposed to this. Anyway, therefore, as I have done in the past, I recommend that this not be something that we take part, or participate in.
All right, is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. Second. Right here. Go.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ward?
No.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, then we're looking at executive session, before the get point, the way of the conversation is. Performances of specific employees of the public body are being, also put in public body, creating, as a component, late last days, employed from the public body or instance, also employed from the public body. Determines footage, and if I can negotiate man of the public body and its employees with their respective representatives for deliberations concerning senior schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
That motion.
Second. Go.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes. That is, it is nothing.
You don't want to stand up across the stage and say something, you don't want to change. I'm just an old voice, but everybody knows it, because it's names of hours. It's an old way to accept downtown Chicago. And you do it again, it's a good, it's a good one.